All set?
That's right.
Okay. This is our regular meeting of the Zone Board of Appeals. Thursday, July 19th, 2012, at 7:00 PM. Items on the agenda tonight. We approve the minutes of June 21st and any other business that may come before us in any course. We have a continued public hearing for Tompkins, Miss Jaden Trust, Merinway 40B, Compensable Permit at 7:30. And then we have the discussion and redo of draft decisions for Teal, Hazel Time, and Wallen. That's what we have on the agenda for tonight. So I'll ask now for motion to accept the minutes of June 21st.
I'll so move.
Second.
Okay, the minute since the motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those are favors, we can play by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, minutes have been approved. Do we have any other business?
Oh, just my job resignation letter.
Yeah, I think that's.
That was it? I guess I didn't slip the expense report in there. It's a brand-new one, though, it's just we have all the money again, because it's attached to my purse. I don't think I've spent any.
You haven't spent any?
No. There's sixteen.
She's only got five or six days left, so be careful. Watch her, Don. Watch those special requests.
Do we need to act on her resignation?
We can accept that.
With regret, right?
Yeah, I think perhaps Mr. Chairman, a public statement about her value and role in the board would be...
Mary Crawford, she... You think so? We should have a face-to-camera when we do. Okay. I have here a letter of resignation, Katrina O'Leary, and it states here, Dear Dawn, this is my formal notification that due to my acceptance of the town, Mollie Town Planner position, I am resigning from the Zone Board of Appeals as administrative assistants. July 25th will be my last day of employment and effective immediately. I'll also have to reduce my hour, work per week, for the ZBA to eight hours or less due to the additional hours created by the new job. Until July 25th, I'll be able to work 45 hours from 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Monday through Thursday, for both the ZBA and the building inspector. I truly appreciate the opportunities that have been given by you as chairman of the ZBA and look forward to working with the board again in the future in my capacity as town planner. Sincerely, Katrina O'Leary. We accept this resignation with regret, Katrina, and you have been a definite asset to this board.
Thank you.
And we are going to miss you greatly, and it's going to be hard to fill your shoes.
Well, I'll be here to help anyone, and truthfully, I really, I think, working with the ZBA and the building inspector, both are really going to round me out as a planner. Not many planners get the chance to work in those and with those departments, and it really gives you a different view of zoning, a different perspective. And so I've learned a lot. I've talked a lot, too. Probably too much.
We wish you very...
Thank you.
We wish you well in your new position, and I say we will miss you as administrative assistant.
Thank you.
We wish you well.
Thanks. I'm still here if you have questions or if you need any help.
Better not say that. How would I recall any questions?
I could always say no.
Do you need to put this letter in the records?
Yeah, I do keep a record of everything sent out as the board packets. So I have a file for everything you get.
Okay. All right. Okay, we have a public hearing in fifteen minutes. I'll take a recess. Do you, do we have, do we have anything that you could give us that John gave us?
Yep. Do you want to wait until the public hearing is opened, or do we just want to look at it?
Well, I just...
And not deliver it?
I just want to...
Yeah, I guess these would have been delivered to you earlier, if I had got them earlier, so... I haven't had a chance to look to see what is included in this.
Okay, well, we... Why don't we take the...
Oh, wait a second, can I do something? I gotta put this plan up here.
I don't know, they probably use that.
They use their board.
No one's using it. So maybe even the camera could see it.
If you had a blackboard, none of this stands out.
I'll get my easel.
Well, no, this is what this is for. Yeah, pretty easy.
He's gonna get his easel.
I need to talk from there.
Need lights, that's the next thing. Couple spots.
Yeah, it does seem dark in here, doesn't it?
If that is you, that you...
The sun is fine.
No, that's not gonna do it. That's the light. Hey! That's gonna be worse.
Well... Please. We're not recesses.
It's gonna blind you.
You got me under my... Your face is quick.
What? Did he just drop this down?
Oh, yeah, I read that.
Oh, this is my...
Is this... This ain't the part where...
Yeah, I read this, did you? I don't know what.
Must have been a text.
Oh, yeah. I think, you know, the house like this. Yeah, that's the history.
Yeah.
And that lien of the timing for...
Yeah.
And that guy was a green. It'd be nice to put a wall there.
Right off.
Yeah.
The reason I wanted to use this is because I was the one whom God has for, but sure, because I thought it was needed, because I see a lot of engineers putting up boards there, and no one uses it so far. So I figured I'd put one up there, just my last name.
Same as the last.
Is it?
I'll see.
I don't know. I just don't know what to do.
Okay, well, we have two other things going that's gonna take some time to...
I suggest maybe you could look at the Wallen one and talk about it.
That's true, but the... The what?
And the Teal. I don't think anyone's coming for those.
No.
No, it's all good as done.
I think they're all straight forward, it's just a pleasant screen. It's a little more involved, but, you know, Mike did the...
At least I can keep them on, right?
That's what I do.
I'm not gonna do it by one. This is the Teal. This is the Teal draft decision handing out right now.
I passed that, right?
I haven't... Sorry, I guess that means if you find any mistakes, they're dogs.
The Hemi ad spell, the trust spell.
Right under the box.
I know.
Here's a plan that I do.
Didn't need to do it.
I'm not on this one.
When you're planning the part, then things get that's so easy to work.
You want on that?
No. This is the... I wasn't on that one.
You named it.
I don't know. This is, probably say this is...
Oh, this is...
Okay, we have... We have a draft here of the decision, Your Honor, in case number 12-05. Decision of the Raleigh Zone Board of Appeals under protective zoning by law upon petition of Michelle and Michael Herrera in letters of complaint dated 11/21, 11/25, 11/2, Ken Ward. Raleigh Building Inspector allegedly violation of ZBA case number A7-10 dated 5/25/07. And a letter from Ken Ward dated 1/30/12 to ZBA asking the board to revisit the original case, A7-10, for the purpose of modifying, amending, or otherwise changing the original conditions for status of the prior approval, approved non-conforming use granted under a special permit on a property located at 672 Weatherfield Street. The public hearing was held at Raleigh Town Hall Annex School on April 19th, 2012. Members acting on this case are Donald W. Thurston, Chairman, Michael Dougherty, Member, David Lebeck, Member, Nathaniel Dummer, Member, and Thomas W. Hygird, Clerk.
Okay, there's one correction here. Phil is actually on this case, and I have him as a signer on the document, but he's not. I don't have him listed as a member acting on the case.
Okay, continuing on. Pursuant to public notice originally from the town common, a newspaper in general circulation in the town valley published on 4th April, 2012, 11/8, 2012, by mail sent post its date paid to all parties and interests as defined in Restuance General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11. And such list of parties was certified by the town assessors and authorities therewith until the town clerk, the planning board, board selectmen, and the building inspector and by being posted in conspicuous place in the town hall, Mollie Town Hall, for not less than 14 days. Land is, the land is located in Upland District in the shown assessors map, 11th Block, 7th Lot 1. The chairman opened a public hearing in due form and determined there was no conflict of interest by him or any other member. The board reviewed the key elements of this case from an informal hearing dated February 15th, 2012. The case involves around the contentions of the Herrera's, which state that the Teals have continually openly violated the conditions of A, of the A7-10 decision, in which they were granted the right to store two vehicles or two trailers on the property. Additionally, that the auxiliary noise created by the presence of larger numbered vehicles and noise from the delivery of products used in Mr. Teal's roofing business represents an ongoing nuisance and safety issue for the neighborhood. And Herrera's also contend that the original decision, A7-10, which acknowledged that the site enjoyed categorization as a prior existing non-conforming business, allowing the board to find in the decision that there was not an expansion of a non-conforming business was inaccurate or perhaps a complete error. At the public hearing on the 19th April, 2012, at 4:30 PM, the petitioner, Michelle Maharo, was present, as was her returning friend, Attorney Gannick, also present, Eric and Tricia Teal, and the returning William Sheen. The certified abudders list was reviewed and accepted. The chairman read into the record letters from the Teals, Herrera's, building inspector, Ken Ward, and Susan Hayes, and town clerk. See all attached. Attorney Gannick, on behalf of Herrera's, was invited to discuss the basis for their appeal. The allegations was voiced to Ken Ward. Attorney Gannick supplied the board with information demonstrating that no legally registered business had ever existed that the Teals addressed prior to the creation of Eric Teal Roofing in the address in 2010. Attorney Sheen stated that this entire process is an impermissible action given yet, whereas prior appeal, 10-7 decision was dismissed from my court, and that in fact, the A7-10 decision found that there was indeed a prior existing business at 672 Weatherfield Street. Abudders Ronnie Simpson and Steve Salano indicate that they do not have any problems with the Teal's business situation. Tricia Teal expressed her concern that Herrera's have overstepped their original concern about intrusion in business activity during overnight hours, which the Teals have changed their actions about and now are seeking to force them to modify what amounts to basic lifestyle conditions. The board is also concerned about the absence of verifiable data about the presence of a business at 672 Weatherfield Street, and requested that the Teals bring further evidence to a continued hearing on June 21st. Further, the board authorized for Hygird to draft a memo to town council picket to explore the board's ability to modify, amend, and change conditions in the earlier decision, A7-10, or if it needs to hold a new hearing based on other statutory regulations. The board voted to continue hearing for June 21st. At a continued hearing, the chairman read into the record a response from town council dated 6/2012. He also reads into the record letters from Attorney Gannick and Attorney Sheen. Further discussion from Attorney Gannick's letter indicate that Herrera's recognize the situation has been improving and that the subject to the board adding conditions regarding product delivery and further packing arrangements, which take vehicles off the property, and would then have the Teals, providing by the original A7-10 decision, the Herrera's would withdraw their complaint. Attorney Sheen states that his clients do not wish to have any additional conditions attached. The board believes that town council memo notes that while there is no specific case law in the subject of amending prior decisions, that within the available case law, there is some grounds for the ability of the board to take any action they so choose, if it is within the context of a public hearing initiated by the original permit holder, but not of the board's own volition. Further testimony from Attorney Sheen reiterated the grounds of the board to take no further action. Neither Herrera's nor Attorney Gannick were present to express views other than those said in Attorney Gannick's letter of June 20th. After requesting any other hearing testimony from other abudders for other interested parties, of which there were none, and a review of all pertinent data was completed, the board determined that there was not sufficient grounds or legal protocols that would compel the board to act, to modify, amend, or change the original decision, case number A7-10. Based on above, the board voted to deny Herrera's request for further enforcement of the conditions of A10-7, A7-10. The original conditions stated therein in full force and effect. But it is the one they have made, of course, they have made 2012.
That's the one. That's the one. One to each. It's not eleven, that's the one.
That should be the 19th.
The 19th?
July.
I'm actually correcting it on my phone. I just sent it to myself, so I can correct it, send it back, and be ready.
Okay, also, I, the, both, in both instances, where I use counsel, I use the body counsel, not a person counsel. So it should be C-O-U-N-S-E-L, not C-O-U-N-C-I-L.
And, oh, yep. And where else is it? Is it on the last page?
It's on page two, page three.
Got it. And in that same paragraph on page three, the last sentence, second to last word, it should be...
See if I can get it all down here.
May?
No, may? You have me as present, but then you don't have me on that.
No, that was a title. I don't have you as present. I have you as a, I don't have you as a signer, because I know Phil was asked to comment. Phil made a comment about a potential conflict that he had because Mr. Teal didn't work on the church. And, right, yeah, and... You work?
I'll go look right now, just see, I can't, I can't remember.
Yeah, you probably missed the...
The only reason he was on, he missed the meeting. I don't remember what month it was.
I can check.
Well, this was the April 19th hearing, and then the second hearing was June, was the May, was June.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely have it for June. Yeah, I mean, I definitely have it June.
Oh, yeah, see, you weren't here for the April nineteenth, so you weren't on it. That's why you weren't on it. Because the case came up when you were absent. And then when you returned, you heard the end of the case, but you cleared both of them.
Were, were the attorneys there for that informal hearing?
No, there was an informal hearing that was...
But I was here both times they were there. I was here both times.
But the informal hearing is February.
Yeah, take a look and see. No, I was here both times, Sheen and Gannett.
Okay.
I know I wasn't.
Yeah, but the informal hearing, no attorneys were here.
That's what I'm saying, I, I know I was here both times.
Gannett was only here once.
One time, yeah.
Yes, Gannett was only here once. Sheen was here. He was here the April hearing and the June hearing.
Here he was.
Actually, if you want to take a look, you can, um, set these.
Well, let's go to the minutes. Because the minutes would show that. Well, that's what I, I think that's what I used. Did he maybe fill substantive for that?
No, I don't think that was here.
I wasn't here for the first hearing.
Okay, then that's not, that's not the voting party then.
That's right.
Okay. So Phil is, is the voting party, but it's not that. It is Mike and Phil. Because I knew I missed one, I knew one missing.
I couldn't remember which.
And I can't remember which.
Right, that's fine.
It had to be February when, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I just remember Phil.
You're out of town.
I don't know what it was, but I wasn't available.
Okay.
I had a camera, that's right. That's right, I did. Up in New Hampshire.
And so where does, where do the voting numbers have to be changed now, other than the initial list of the, of the members present?
The initial up and down of the signature block.
Oh, okay, just right here.
My name, I'm here as one L. Oh, and you need to change this, Daniel.
And add...
Anything good, I get the credit anyway. Bad, my dad gets the credit.
Did you get that? Get your name?
Phil Crissy.
One L is one L.
Okay. Well, how many times are you mentioned in the text?
He's only mentioned as a signer, not mentioned in the text.
It's probably just the last name, right? Or he's mentioned in the text.
He's, yeah, he's only mentioned, and he should be mentioned in the text as a...
Philip with two Ls is the last name, right? Usually?
No, some, some people actually use two Ls.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I don't think there's any hard rule on it. So Phil needs to be switched for a nat, your parents. If they went on page one.
Phil is an natural French.
Then I need to be...
Yeah, sometimes with...
So you spell them two Ls?
And Nat.
One L, one L.
Is replaced with Mike on the signature.
Yes.
Right.
Not sure if this is going to save me any time with a trial.
How are you editing through there? How does she...
In pages?
What pages is the Mac product, right?
Mm-hmm.
Pages has to convert it back then, right?
I can, when it asks you to email, it says, "Do you want to email it as a Word document instead?"
Yeah.
I'll see how it works.
Definitely worth the nine ninety-nine.
All right, let me see if I can get it. Oh, were you done with, then I'll try and print it out.
You know, we got a chance, yes.
I just will take care of it right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's got one down right now.
Right. Hey, this is different.
Oh.
Is there anything where you can keep these other books?
Thank you.
This is new.
What, this?
Yeah.
This is new, Dave. I guess for one more, she's, she can handle it, too. We'll have to write this to be made in there.
We made the council.
Oh, yeah. Twenty-three, right.
Nineteen...
That's all.
Right. Those should be, actually, those should be possessive boards, too. I mean, it's not possessive, it's...
Council, wrong, right?
Yeah. And I spelled it, I spelled it wrong also. Page two, I thought. Yeah, town council down here.
That is, it says when it put apostrophes in the wrong places. Have seen that, though. That's complete signs. The apostrophes in the wrong place have changed the entire meaning.
Maybe because I didn't have it.
Nothing else that you can learn. We can't change a decision on our own.
That, it says that...
No, no, I said, if any, we've learned that.
Yeah. No, absolutely. And well, the only way we can see, I think we could have in the context of a, well, it can only be done in the context of a hearing, a duly, of a hearing by the original permit holder.
Right.
If Teal came to us and said, "I want to store twelve trucks now, and I want you guys to give me that," right? Then we could reopen it and go through the whole process and amend the prior decision if we wanted to. But only if he does it. We can't do it if anyone else does it.
That's what I mean. That's what we, I thought we could change it, and I know, I know.
Statement, it's in chapter forty-eight that it refers to the fact that the board can reopen the case for a used one.
Yeah, well, we, we can, it, it's, it's somewhat, it's evident, you know, as town councils, that it's somewhat, they, they don't, there's a lot of cases on that.
That seems silly that would happen. I mean, it would seem like you would have to revoke it.
Did something to the font. You noticed the town rally at the top, I don't know.
Seems like a wasteful. There's a time and end to it, though.
See how the font there is different, just the letter?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it didn't translate into the, the, the I, whatever.
Well, is it consistent? Is what you have here consistent in the document? Just it matched with this one?
No, the text is all perfect. It's just the font is different up here especially. Look at the town of Rowley, it's just different.
It's a little small.
Yeah, not as fancy.
You've got here the nineteenth of May, it's nineteenth of July.
Oh, wait. Why do, that's, that'll be a quick change. Do you see anything else before...
This round is.
I took Nat down to the top. Changed town council. And replaced Nat with Mike.
Yeah.
Is that it? Hmm?
Mike was already there, but you're going to fill this person?
No, they are the signature blocks, but he wasn't there.
So it's all set?
It's all set, so today, May date.
Okay.
Oh, for the good old days when we used carbon paper.
What's carbon paper? Just kidding. You have the old mimeograph machine. I remember running that in high school.
There was a one that we used a lot of, that, uh, it, uh, on purple, purple paper behind it. They'd come back on it. It wasn't quite mimeograph, it was something, it wasn't as good as mimeograph. You could run them for a while. Our original decisions were, were that way because I would take it into, into work and into GE and get the secretary to do the typing.
You know, you mentioned the carbon paper. This guy Frank Wilson invented the Xerox machine. He was trying to peddle it. And he went to East McCordack trying to peddle it. The president told him, "Who needs a copying machine when we have carbon paper?" Famous decisions.
And they make that, and they have four or five sheets of carbon paper to lay it, and you have, and the drill has to correct one mistake.
Oh.
This is probably going to have to print up the whole thing again. Aren't you giving the other ones a little bit of a sec?
No pressing name for the end. Out. They just...
Yeah. My God. Yeah, son.
That's the date of July, but...
No, it isn't. It's voted, you voted last month. Are you voting, you're saying you're voting tonight? Are you kidding me?
No, no, we voted. We voted all at the same time.
This is, okay, when did we vote it?
Yeah, it was June twenty-third.
Yeah, yeah.
So that, it's supposed to be the twenty-first day of June. You forgot the two, not the nine. That's the number.
No, 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 yeah, but it was still May. That's all.
You, you meant, you meant the, um, the May meeting or June meeting?
June.
June meeting.
And that was twenty-first.
The June meeting was twenty-first.
Uh, one, I will only print up one page.
Why don't you get a carbon sheet?
And try to erase carbon when it's on. It was nothing but a mess. And then the thing came along with, with the whiteout.
Oh, yeah, the whiteout.
Yeah.
I read, I read in the paper today where the company that, uh, Nokia, uh, cell phones, they devised seven or eight years ago, seven or eight years before Apple came out with their, with their cellphone, their phone and their tablet, they had already invented it, but hadn't, they hadn't patented it or anything else. They were, they were too busy doing research and so forth. And they lost the whole thing out.
I'm just going to take this and replace. There, and I'm going to put that on top so you can sign it. And I put a paper clip here, too.
I think we should go back to carbon paper on whiteout.
Don't shake some of the things in there.
That's why they're dressed.
A little bit of seven up there, it sounds like. I'll bet you will, Tony.
And you're probably coming to the car.
Yeah, four trucks earlier at seven.
Oh, yeah, that's a legal signature. Very clear.
It's a pride to have to sign so much every day. It used to be my pleasure.
He used to say Mike Dougherty, right? Okay. Put that one. All right, John.
Geez, I'm trying. Nice wheel.
I think it's more... I don't, I can't, I don't know.
Oh, we did that one up there.
One?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I might, yeah, but I don't, I don't pay my bill, that's right.
What, I walk in here?
Oh, yeah.
Taking a walk, walking in. All right, this is a continued hearing for Marion Way Forty-B application. John has presented us with some new plans in here. And he has, he supplied us with, uh, a copy of his copy today. I should, it's...
Yeah, you notice this, this is dark here. Really?
So the TV camera can't pick that up? Well, we did one point so much on that.
That's right.
This is the front.
This is taking a pull up here.
Okay.
And he comes down, he turns.
Did you want Sean to present?
Yeah, yeah, you can, uh, Ron, you can explain what you got here.
Yeah, what's going on here?
Okay, you asked for the, uh, all the abuddists to the applicant's property, which consists of about a hundred and forty acres. And that's what we've supplied. Uh, this is where we're proposing the subdivision at the curve on Daniels Road. And here's Emily Lane, and you continue down Dodge Road. And, uh, over here, I believe this is the Mill River subdivision. And Dodge Road turns into Long Hill. And, uh, Dodge Road turns into Long Hill Road. Yeah, Long Hill Road, and then can, uh... Whether, and then, and then it meets up with Weathersfield Street, and continues, uh, Weathersfield continues out on Route One. And, uh... We have the lots on Emily Lane abutting the property. Over here, we have the Carriage Pine Golf Course, formerly the Rowley Country Club. William Herrick owns a rather large piece over here, we've supplied the assessor's map and parcel number. Moran Realty Trust is next to Herrick. And over here, we have, on the easterly side of the applicant's property, there's a brook, meandering brook, and on the other side is the Girl Scout property. On the southerly side, we have land owned by Todd Riquier, TTR Realty Trust. There's a small PC that was taken by tax title, and that now belongs to Town Rowley. And also on the southerly side is a piece owned by, um... The Herrick, Herrick family. I'm sorry, the Ricker family.
This is the...
What's this dotted line here between, uh, the... And the Girl Scout camp? Uh, dotted line?
That one, right.
That one, right? Oh, that, oh, that, that's the brook. That's the brook. Right. Is that property line also? Yes, yeah. Yep, uh, um, this property is in, in, um... Under the forestry law, I forget the chapter sixty, sixty-one A, maybe?
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
And, and so is the Girl Scout property, and, uh, uh... The trust has forested this property up to the brook. And a couple of years later, the Girl Scouts, uh, forested their property up to the brook, so they recognized the brook as the property line. I understood that he had access in Wensfield Street from... No. Doesn't look like it. Doesn't look like it.
No, it's good.
I think at the last meeting, I mentioned, uh, they tried to buy a piece from Moran for access, but the price was in the seven figures, and, uh, was just out of sight. It doesn't go like that.
Yeah.
No, good.
Do you have Long Hill Road feeding into Weathersfield? Right.
Doesn't.
Uh, Weathersfield Street, let's see.
Weathersfield.
Doesn't, doesn't feed.
Doesn't.
Weathersfield Street...
That's not right.
Takes a turn to Georgetown here. And this is where there's an island? Yeah, which is shoots off, it doesn't go into it.
It doesn't go into it.
Shoots off. Well, yeah, it shoots off, I just showed it, I just showed it continuous.
It's a right angle, it comes in at a right angle...
Right.
To Weathersfield.
Right. Uh, I didn't show Weathersfield Street because I figured it wasn't relevant.
It's up there.
Well, no, I'm, I'm saying at the intersection with Long Hill. Long Hill Road starts right here, and Weathersfield Street turns right and goes into Georgetown. I showed it as one continuous thing because...
Yeah, okay.
That's, that, that's the way the, uh, the abuddas are.
John, could you, could you, I'm not really remotely familiar with barely more than the proposed Marion Way. And I, and, and the concern that's been voiced is that the Marion Way proposal, if allowed to move forward, is ultimately going to be an access point into the rest of this lot.
Right.
Um, but you've also pointed out that there are wetlands issues, there are, there are a variety of issues that, that prevent really, uh...
Economical access.
Thinking about, you know, doing much with this size, so, so where, where is the usable, where is the good property that would be arguably, that's good buildable land, and, you know, but it would cost us this to get there, or we'd have to do this to go, I mean, where, where is that?
Well, all this is good buildable land.
It is.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there are a few wetlands on it.
Yeah.
But in this area here, it's nice and level, it is hilly in this area. But still, uh, uh, we have a conceptual plan that, um... Just a kind of rough conceptual plan that... Well... I think goes out to here, and then maybe connects into one of these lots here.
How can that be sixteen acres?
For, for a second, access.
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
That's, yeah, it's a property line.
And then, and the thought process in your conceptual framework is for, uh, single-family residents out there?
We don't know. You know, we were, we were very satisfied with what happened at Emily Lane, and then they increased the zoning to a hundred... When we first went in Emily Lane, the zoning was a hundred and twenty-five, forty thousand square feet.
Right.
And then they increased it to a hundred and fifty and sixty thousand square feet. I think that's right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we're, we're, we're really a reluctant applicant, are you?
We sense that.
Huh?
We sense that.
How reluctant are you?
You say you have a conceptual plan of that, and you've had that for some time, right? It, it's really a bare bones plan. Uh, it, uh... It's almost, it's almost a scratch paper conceptual plan. But there is a problem going across at the end of the proposed Marion Way. Uh, there's seventy feet of wetlands we have to cross with a nine-foot, uh, high road, similar to the one on, um, Wild Pasture, which is off Weathersfield Street. It'd be something similar to that, and that's, something like that, it's very, very expensive. It's, um... It's a question of where we're gonna go next if we go anywhere. But it, but the, the hundred and forty-five acres is buildable land. Most of it's level and sandy, so it will pass perk tests. Uh, we've driven around it in a golf cart that we borrowed from the golf course quite a few times. Matter of fact, we even had a plan for an additional nine holes on the golf course, and one of these days, that might come to fruition.
I don't know about economical for that, John. Might be pretty.
I don't think it'd make the best use of the land. Golf courses, as a rule, don't make money.
Right.
I've been involved with two or three of them, and all of them are money losers, starting with Ferncroft.
Yeah, unless they give away green jackets or something like that.
Right.
It's hard to make money.
Okay, all right. Okay, you got your traffic study here. And was this the purpose of that plan, to see if we did have any acts, other access?
To see where it might be, to see, you know, where you might construct on it, to see what kind of access options you'd probably be looking at?
Kind of boxed himself in, didn't he? Well, you know, Bruce's father sold the land for the golf course. And that was back then, back then, well, that was, let's see, that would have been in the early fifties.
Nobody foresaw this.
People weren't interested in...
No.
In the building.
There were no, practically no houses on that road at all.
That's right.
Nothing.
Right.
Wide open.
We have some nineteen fifty-two aerial photographs of Rowley. And you'd be amazed at how rural it actually was in the early fifties. Could count the houses almost on one hand.
Yeah, 'cause when I was first on this board, there were no maps at all, nothing. And you'd have to go to the assessors, and, and the assessor would try to, try to remember what was where and who, who, who... And I got some geodetic survey maps and, and put them all together and glued them all together. From that, we could, we could make, we made a map.
Yeah.
We could use, but...
And in the traffic study, I threw a figure out at them, I said, we're, uh... We're proposing ten, and the board wanted to know future, I just threw a figure out of, of fifty. Uh, but, uh, to go across from Marion Way, that is really a, a serious challenge.
To what?
You know, to cross the, the wetland.
Oh, yeah.
It's, uh... It, it's, it's far more expensive than what they happened at Wild Pasture. They didn't have as much wetlands to go through.
Yeah, you'd have quite a bridge.
And, oh, right. Not only that, but we need, uh, we've done some preliminary, um, drainage studies. I think we ended up with two thirty-six inch culverts to let a hundred-year storm go through. So, so, you know, it wouldn't back up and flood anybody, uh, it's, uh...
Those aren't free.
So, John, so if I understand you, the... Because it's not a hundred percent clear to me. Um, are these results, or I should say projections, based on the twenty units that you have in the project? Or the sixty?
The sixty. We still haven't given enough the crossing, but the more we look at it, the more troublesome it, uh, it appears economically. And this P E P P that did the study, uh, we chose them because they did the, uh, traffic study for the Mill River Heights just beyond the golf course, the subdivision, on, uh, on Dodge Road just beyond the golf course. We tried to get the same company that, uh, is, is doing the study for the golf course, but the price they wanted was out of sight. When they had all the figures.
Mr. Chairman? Um, I think, I think the plan was to wait for, this is the last bit of information that we're waiting for?
Yes.
Before we had an engineer review it, but before an engineer reviews it. Um, it's still, since December, it still hasn't been sent around to town departments to get feedback on all these changes. And so, I didn't know if you were going to talk about having someone review the traffic plan and all the changes, it, I don't know if you were thinking of using the same firm, but it should be reviewed by town departments to get feedback first. Well, the, the plans, and I think all departments would probably be interested in the traffic study, too. I know the, the planning board has, as consultant funds, that they can use to actually review things like this, and so you may want to talk to the planning board about... Looking at it.
And I believe the other thing was that we didn't want to send this off to Camet until the traffic study was completed?
We didn't want to ask Camet to do any further until Roy is there. This only deals with...
Sure.
Generation, though, is that right?
Oh, no, he looks at the site distances.
And, and the site distances.
And also the problem of, um... A car going south on Daniel's Road, wanting to make a turn, a left turn onto Marion Way, while waiting for another car coming from Abel Street. And the, the car behind them, how far, you know, what's this, what would be the stopping site distance for the car also coming down Daniel's Road? To see the stopped car waiting to make that left turn?
Okay. All right. Problem as I see it is that we have final plans, and we have a traffic study, and he's looking for a decision at this point.
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman...
I, I think what we need to do is to take the final plans that we have, send them to all the departments, and get their feedback for, and for any changes that they feel need to be, be made. As well as this board going over those plans, uh, to see what changes they would like to see made. And saying that, I don't see this, that we need to go any further tonight.
I agree.
You agree?
I think, Mr. Chairman, we also are gonna have our consultants lay in on all of this material. She's only...
Right.
You know, there's more we have access to her on.
I want you, you to send a complete packet of the information that you have supplied us to Edie Nett.
I, I have done that, except, I don't know, I can't remember if I sent her what, what's here tonight.
Because the last time I talked to her, she didn't have anything.
Can, can Katrina?
I'll go and check with her. I even sent her copies of the photographs that I had in the last meeting.
Wanted list together?
I've, I've sent everything to her, I think what you're saying is he should be sending a paper copy to her office for her, right? Cause I, I've emailed her everything.
Yeah, she has the electronic, she has what we got on that email.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think she was on it.
Okay, so what she wants is paper copy?
Right.
Paper copy of everything. Paper copy of everything.
Right.
I believe I sent that to her. Oh, I know I didn't. I sent the paper copies of everything.
The traffic study?
No, not, no, everything except tonight. There is, there is one other major item that we haven't addressed, and that's the flood study. And...
That's all the conservation, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
That's conservation, isn't it?
Well, not really. I think it involves everyone. And I was going to send it to Camet, but then, if you recall, I think it was at the last meeting, Brent showed up from the Conservation Commission and said we couldn't alter the dam at the, behind Emily Lane, and that kind of threw a monkey wrench into the works. And what we'd been doing, that was with the detention ponds. And we've studied that. I don't agree with his conclusions. The regulations are complex, even convoluted. They're very difficult to understand, and rather than make a major issue of it, we took on a new approach, rather than have detention ponds, we're studying underground storage so that you wouldn't, all the, all the storage would be underground. And I've got, I've got a plan.
That's something you should deal with the Concom, not us.
Well, it's...
You should go to them first and get all their recommendations so they can come back to us instead of you talking with us.
Okay.
And the other ones really, don't you think? And the other ones really should be dealing with it.
Also, Camet should review it because they...
Well, why don't you get that done with him first?
Tom would do.
The Concom.
It's just going to be more efficient if it's presented to us in one shot.
Right.
With your calls or any comments.
Well, I know, but the Conservation Commission has repeatedly asked for a flood study. If you look at their comments. So, what I'm proposing is that we finish up this underground analysis that we're doing and send it in to you and a copy to Camet and let them go over it, and then we can go with the Concom.
How, how much longer will that involve? How much more time?
I think we can wrap it up in a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay, then, cool.
So, that will finalize these plans, and then we can send it to town departments?
Right.
That's what I would suggest.
And that won't be, that, in your view, isn't an alternative. That'll be the option you'll want to pursue.
Right, right.
So, that would probably put it off for next month?
Yeah.
Yeah, at least.
And I think Camet gave us a price for reviewing a flood study. I think it was 20, 250, somewhere in the ballpark.
Yeah, I think we have to go back to your member.
And the board, the board is free to choose any consultant, too, right?
Right. Right, we're not obligated.
So, just so you know, that they, they're not stuck with Camet. They, so maybe you should submit it to them, and then they can decide which consultant?
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think you should, you should give it to us so we can get to the departments, and then we'll get the department feedback, and then we'll determine where we go with it, whether we give it to Camet or anybody else.
Well, it makes sense why they've studied the project. Someone new would have to start from scratch?
No, I don't.
That's doubtful.
How do you feel, how do you feel about reduction in the number of buildings you've got on that? Well, we've studied that at great length, and it just becomes uneconomical. Right now, the projections we have, the profit's 18%. And if you eliminate one of the units, your profit's going to go down to 5%, maybe even less, and it just, it's, it'll be unbuildable.
Because I feel it's too crowded.
I know.
Me, too.
I feel it's too crowded. The houses too close together, and you're trying to put, you're trying to put two families
20,000 roughly square feet, right?
Right, and that's, that's too small. That's...
And, and believe me, we've agonized over it.
Yeah.
And we're just limited by, by the shape of the property.
Well, I don't think there's any more.
You want to use all the property? And there's plenty of room, wouldn't you?
Yeah, but we've got to go across that 70-feet of wetlands.
What's, what's in this little, in this slot that runs between?
The back of the houses on the right.
The back of the houses. It's all, it's all your property.
Oh, yeah, but that's very hilly.
That's wetland.
No, no, the wetlands are on the other side. Oh, wait a minute. Am I looking at it? Yeah, so you're right.
Daniels Road, the wetlands here.
Yeah, that's right. The wetlands are there, right.
That's why you're not using them.
Yeah. Yeah, I brought this along here. I think the area you were looking at was right in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the wetlands are just on the other side of it.
Let me see that again. This is Emily Lane.
Right.
And he's got access to all this through here, doesn't he? He owns this right here, right?
Yeah.
Well, there's some, let's see, there's lots there, and there are lots there that we show on the other plan.
That you haven't ever built on.
Well, they haven't been built on, but there's separate lots.
Yeah.
That's where you were going to go into, right? On Phase 2?
On Phase 2, possibly.
I mean, I understand, on the sketch of a...
This doesn't really show. And you've really got a big cut.
Where's the town? Where's the town land?
Up in here.
Let me see.
It's due, it's due east of Emily.
See, this doesn't show a lot lines. It just shows drainage boundaries, let me think a minute. Because I think it's up in here.
Up in here, yeah. Yeah, it's up in here.
Yeah, yeah. Right, yeah, it's up in here.
Yeah, up on this corner.
Yeah, exactly.
In here? That far away from, that's...
It's really, it's landlocked.
Yeah, it's too far away from Emily Lane, isn't it?
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's way, it's up here and that, and see...
Yeah, but it shows it here as being close.
Well, I think if you scale...
Yeah, you're showing it here.
Yeah. I'm scaling a jump.
Well, I think if you scale it and you scale this, I think you'll see that in the same...
Yeah, there's a lot of wet, a lot of use of water pond in between.
Right.
Would you ever be willing to grant the town an easement over this, just for a pedestrian path?
Oh, yeah.
And because there's a development going in here also, and if they do the same thing, we might be able to get a path going from Havel and across the street is Hunsley Hills, down through, across, across here, and I'm not sure who owns this, or if there's a way through. I think Krista Drive is somewhere.
Yeah, right, right.
Right around here. So, you may be able to get through to Weatherfield, should be.
Yeah, that's long-term planning. That's certainly in the, in the works.
And then it, you could still potentially develop this area, but there'd be easements on the properties, you know, for the, for a public...
So, why can't, why can't you access this land through here?
Well, you'd have to go out and see it, because you cannot build a 55-foot right-of-way here. You don't have enough width in the, in the land for the access at the law, at the law portion of the dam. The law portion of the dam's fine, but as soon as you go over it, it narrows down to about 20...
Where's the dam?
The, the dam is right here. Yeah, right there.
Okay, that's...
And as soon as you go across it, it's high and dry land, but there's wetlands on both sides, and it's only about 25 to 30 feet wide. It isn't enough for a road, 55 feet.
And what makes the difference down here? Crossing, where, where's your crossing over here?
It's Daniels Road, wait a minute. The crossing...
It's lower. No, it's down here.
The crossing would be somewhere in here.
This is Daniel's Road.
Right, yeah, that's, yeah. The access is about here.
Right, and it comes into where?
It comes something like this, or no, it moves over like this.
Yeah.
And then we have this crossing here that's about a good 75 feet.
Yeah, this doesn't accomplish anything.
No, we're wasting time. Okay. Okay. Put these packets together, get them to the different town.
What, you're going to wait for the underground storage plans?
Yeah.
It could potentially, I don't know where the underground storage will go, but...
You know, wetland.
It'd go, no, it can't go into wetlands. It's going to go behind some of the lots.
So, it may change the septic areas or the backup septic areas?
No, it won't change the septic areas. It, actually, it changes very little, assuming the houses are built, it'd look like a level backyard.
Thank you, Michael. What do you use? Do you use concrete?
Nope. You can, but they have plastic chambers now.
I, yeah.
The Coltex or infiltrators.
All right, so you're going to give us new plans showing that?
And, and the flood study to go with it?
Okay. I mean, they're going to tell me a different design.
All right.
I mean, just to give you an idea here, on Wilson Pond, they have them down at the bottom.
The Coltex?
The boxes, the hole, all that, and they flood, they fill up all the time.
Basement floods on that lot all the time?
Huh?
The basement on that lot floods all the time.
Yeah, and they get those hole and things there. My own opinion, like I say, he should go to Concom. Let them get this all squared away before they've taken up all your time yet. I mean, that's just my opinion. Let him get it all. I end up with them. They know the wetland and all that, and the visitation and... You haven't been to Concom yet?
No.
Okay, I think that's your next step.
Yeah, they've been, they've been wanting a flood study. They've been asking for it.
Yeah, well, you know... They're the experts on that, so you should do that, then come on into water.
But can we get Camet to review the flood study and submit it?
Go to Concom. Go to Concom, get that done. That's what I would say, before we do anything.
All right.
In fact, it used to be, when our first, first order bees, Concom came after us.
After we got rid of it.
And that, that should take at least three months, right? Two months? Three months?
What does it say, Charlie? Why do you want to do, continue the hearing until...
Just put it continuous until we hear from him?
September? You think they have the current information in September?
No, we have, we...
I'd like to think so, but I don't think it's going to happen.
But we'd have, we'll have to continue it every month. Just continue it, yeah.
Can't continue it three months?
We can continue it for two months, about three. We'll do it out, and then we'll do it again.
Yeah.
Just keep an eye on it.
So, is there, do you have a good list, a working list now, of everything that's necessary, the new plans for this, and you need to get Edie Netter all the information?
I'll, I'll check with her, but I'm pretty sure, I know I mailed it to her, and I think I've even talked with her after, after she got it. And I know I sent her the photographs that I had in the last meeting. I sent her copies of those.
And meanwhile, the board has to decide if they're going to use Camet again. Not tonight, but I mean...
Wait until we get Concom.
We have something to think about.
Yeah.
Just so that something gets accomplished in those three months, too. I mean, two months.
Well, it's up to him.
Right.
Do you want to continue it for three months?
Did you say you could only do it two months?
Well, I just felt...
Oh, I didn't, I thought you knew what the state of the...
It probably just makes sense if there were two months, and then you can just, you can take the temperature, two months and see.
Just continue it for two months, and then if we need it, we'll do it again.
Yeah.
See where we're at. Yeah, okay.
I've got a letter here.
August, September 28th, 20th.
20th.
September 20th.
September 20th?
Yeah. Then you'll probably ask for a continuance, and we'll give you one.
Well, did you want me to send everything around before I left? Is that why you want me to send it around?
No.
Or do you want to wait for it to be complete first?
Complete.
Yeah.
Should be complete.
I'll leave everything all set up, ready to go, when it comes in.
No, we'll just go down the hall and...
We'll get you on the consultant. We'll get her on a consultant, get her on this particular job.
$50 an hour.
Whatever. $150.
Whatever our budget will afford.
Nothing.
Right.
Okay, he's got... You say paper, don't you, John?
Kind of got caught somewhere, right?
He's got, he's got a letter here originally addressed the 15th of March, and he's crossed the hills, put the 19th of July on it. And he's got April 19th crossed on, put September 20th on it.
What's that?
Big spender.
Yeah.
So, we need a motion to continue?
Okay, we'll continue this to, yeah. You want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion, we continue the hearing until September 20th, the 2nd. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Gee, that's beautiful. Cold, he is cold.
Good night.
Thank you very much.
Good night, thanks, Charlie.
We go Pleasant Street?
Yeah, let's see how many titles we've got.
Nine. Mr. Nine.
Again, I did not...
Nine.
That was you, Tom.
Cleans her plate. The basket, not me. Let's run you over and back up. Right, right, now she's come back already.
I don't have one to talk to, so someone's going to have to mark one up on us.
What do you mean, I'm going to do more to you? Adam has a copy, because I sent him a copy. I appreciate that.
I did.
Okay, good. I brought one. You don't mind me looking over? I brought my own draft. I have a, I can look at my own draft right here.
I have a, I can look at my own draft right here. Well, this is my own draft. If it helps at all, I did, uh-
Right, yeah.
In the, in the brief period I had since I got the, the decision, I, I did make a few edits myself. A few corrections I found, and I've got copies if that helps, if you, if you can look at what you've got now and-
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll read through this and the board will evaluate. And if you have comments that, you know, will, will be helpful, we'll integrate them.
Great.
Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, why don't you read it? Okay, Tom's, Tom's gonna, gonna read the draft. Follow along and, uh, see any corrections. Check them off. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay. Uh, decision of the Raleigh zoning board of appeals under the protective zoning by law upon petition of George Hazelton, trustee of Pleasant Street Realty Trust dated five eleven two twelve for a special permit on a property located at thirty-four dash thirty-six Pleasant as a party agreed by an action of the building inspector on four eighteen two twelve in order to construct a two-family dwelling at said location. Public hearing was held at the Raleigh Town Hall Annex Center School on June twenty-first, two thousand and twelve. Members acting on this case are Don W. Thurston, chairman, Michael Doherty, member, David LeBeck, member, Nathaniel Dummer, member, and Thomas D. Hygret, clerk. Pursuant to a public notice originally in the town common of newspaper and general circulation in the town of Raleigh, published on the fifth of June, two thousand and twelve, and on the twelfth day of June, two thousand and twelve, and by mail sent postage prepaid to all parties in interest as defined in Mass General Law's Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven. And such list of parties was certified by the town assessors in accordance therewith and to the town clerk, the planning board, the board of selectmen, and the building inspector, and by being posted in a conspicuous place in the Raleigh Town Hall for not less than fourteen days. The land is located in the outlined district and is shown on Assessors Map twenty-four, Lot eighty-nine. The deed is recorded in the Essex Registry of Deeds Book twenty-eight nine forty, page five thirty-three. The applicant is requesting a special permit under Section six point three of the Raleigh zoning bylaws, which states, quote, "That a building in existence on May first nineteen eighty-one may be converted into one, parenthesis, one or more dwelling units than it originally contained, and that the board may issue a special permit. Only if the board determines that there will be no substantial change to the nonconforming nature of the structure, it will approve the application." In an effort to meet this criteria, the applicant has asked the board to consider all open options open to it with regard to the current structure, whether it be as a modification of an existing nonconforming use or as a conversion to a two-family, uh, structure. The chairman opened the public hearing in due form and determined there was no conflict of interest by him or any other member. Page two, preliminary case material. At the public hearing on June twenty-first of, uh, on the twenty-first of June, two thousand and twelve at approximately eight fifteen P M., the applicant, George Hazelton, was present at the hearing, as was his attorney, attorney Adam Costa. Also present was the current owner of the property, Peter Delzel. The certified of butters list was reviewed and accepted. The applicant also submitted a certified plot plan dated March twenty-three, two thousand and twelve, job number thirty-four thirty-six dash P L., copy of the existing, that should be existing, the Z B A case decision, decision case A eleven dash O three granting a special permit to construct a new building. Attorney Costa explains the complete application package. He breaks the request and departs the question of whether the structure has retained its grandfather nonconforming status. One, a finding for a change that in nonconforming building? Or two, does the structure meet the definition under Section three to a finding that the conversion can be done on a substandard lot? The board reviews the circumstances surrounding the abandonment of the prior two, two-family use and is unable to conclude that it was abandoned despite evidence suggesting that the bylaw issue was clearly one of not, of use or not, not intent, as put forth by attorney Costa. The chairman then read into the record a board of health letter dated six twenty, two thousand and twelve, Butter Luis Sheldon's, uh, letter of six eleven twelve in support of the application, and building inspector Ken Ward's letter of four eight twelve in which he outlined the conditions under which he could approve a building permit for the proposed construction. Chairman also read into the record a letter from the Raleigh Historic Commission urging the Z B A to support and approve the project. Our butter Marcela Boyd also spoke in support of the project, noting that it would remove an high sore from the neighborhood once and for all and improve everyone's property values. Resident and architect David Jackwith also spoke in support of the application. Attorney Costa then explained that if the property does not meet the criteria for being considered a pre-existing nonconforming use, the board could still act within their judgment to treat the property as having reverted to single-family use, and the right of conversion could serve as the foundation for granting said special permit. The board debated the terms intended abandonment and conversion and considered closely building inspector Ward's definition of building in existence as of nineteen eighty-one in an effort to come to conclusion about the actual status of the building. After requesting any other hearing testimony from either a butters or other interested parties, of which there was none, and a review of all the pertinent data was completed, the board determined that there were sufficient grounds to grant the special permit. It will allow the construction to occur based on support for the project from the community, the town historical district commission, the board of health, and the right of an owner to convert a property from a single family to a multiple, multiple dwelling unit given the property's existence prior to nineteen eighty-one, and whose nonconforming use will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood in which it is located. Based on the above, the board voted to draft an approval decision of the special permit as to constructive two-family residence at thirty-four thirty-six Pleasant Street under Section five point, uh, that's incorrect, five point four point two for the board's vote out of before the June twenty-first, two thousand and twelve meeting. Board findings. The board, after concluding the thorough review of the application and the proposed new building to be built on the site, with special consideration for its virtually unexpanded nonconformity with respect to side and rear setback laws, and considering the applicant's desire to maintain the character of the site and replace the new structure now, that the, replace the structure now existing on the site with a near duplicate image, finds the application as presented in its current form to be not any more detrimental a nonconforming structure or detriment to the neighborhood, and agreeing to issue a special permit as requested on site plans provided as part of the application previously cited in attached tier two and shown in the accompanying plot plan. Plot plan dated March twenty-third, two thousand, twenty-three dash two oh twelve, job number thirty-four thirty-six P L., see previously noted. A, the board hereby grants the applicant's appeal of the building inspector's opinion as it relates to his definition of a building in existence in nineteen eighty-one. B, the board then hereby grants a special permit under six point three point one point three to convert the building into a two-family structure and to allow the building to be erected on a lot in the outlined district which does not contain at least sixty thousand square feet of area plus five thousand square feet for the second dwelling unit as required by six point one point one B and six point three point one point one point one, or one hundred and fifty feet of frontage as required by six point three point one point one point one, based on findings that, one, the building was in existence on May first nineteen eighty-one; two, that the use as a two-family structure is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the use as one-family structure; three, that the two-family structure is not substantially more detrimental, uh, I see. I repeated that. Four, that the board of health has approved the sewage disposal system writing. Five, that no more than twenty-five percent of the lot area will be covered by structures. Six, that there will be at least one off-street parking space for each bedroom in the structure. Seven, that there are no outside storage areas, so no screening is needed. Eight, that the building is served by municipal water. And nine, that the structure will contain at least eleven hundred square feet, and no unit shall have a floor area of less than three hundred and fifty square feet plus one hundred square feet for each bedroom over one. LeBeck seconds the motion. All members voted in favor. Above special permit granted as under Section six point three point one to be granted subject to the following conditions. The final plan showing location and construction of the building must be approved by the building inspector. The applicant shall obtain and submit to the zoning board of appeals a letter from said inspector as proof of the final plan's approval. Two, any changes to the plan supplied with this application resulting from the above reviews and approval must be brought before the zoning board of appeals for review and approval prior to filing the plan, the registry of deeds. See attached plan. The final approved copy of the plans must be submitted to the fire department to determine if any all additional proposed alarms are to code. Any subsequent change to the plan must be submitted to the zoning board of appeals for approval. Four, five, failure to comply with the provision of this decision at any time shall be reasonable grounds for the building inspector to order operation of all construction at this location and, and to order operation of all construction at this location to cease. Voted, et cetera.
Twenty-first, yeah.
Now, Adam, if I may, I, I'm, I'm gonna share with the board. I did late send him a copy of this because he asked. I had, I had invited him to offer us insight about, to make sure that we included information. And I did finally get him a copy of this before the board meeting tonight. He did respond, um, well, he did respond before he got this with some comments that he wanted to make sure we incorporated. Let me just read to you the three points which he actually suggested we address and I think we can balance that against the extent to which they are or not addressed here. And he can provide some insight. He, he would like to make sure, he said, "In and at shell, I'm hopeful that the decision will at a minimum address each type of zoning relief needed and contain an affirmative statement that such relief was voted upon and granted." A, pursuant to, to General Law forty-eight, six one, a finding, special permit, that reconstruction of the home on the locus will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming structure to the neighborhood. I, I think we addressed that. As you well know, the board's decision must include findings of fact to support its conclusion with no substantial detriment. These findings might include references to the poor condition of the structure today, the slight extent to which the violator front yard setback will be extended, the reduced footprint of the reconstructed two-family home as compared to that, to that existing today, and improved aesthetics associated with redevelopment of the locus. There are more details than I cited, but I think there's, you know, and we can incorporate those. I think you said it almost. Well, I, I, I tried to, and, and if you're comfortable with them, essentially-
I, I, I'll, I'll allow you to continue, but I, I think, you know, I've reviewed the decision that you sent over a short while ago, and I, I think you did a remarkable job, including, um-
Addressing that.
Addressing not only what I mentioned, but what was discussed at the public hearing and really touching upon the different types of relief. I think it was a very good decision, so.
Okay, fine. Um, his second point was, "As per the authority vested in the board by General Law's forty-eight, section eight fifteen, reversal of the April eighteenth, two thousand and twelve determination, interpretation by the town's building inspector that conversion of the home from a one to a two-family through reconstruction is not permitted." We specifically grant appeal of that particular opinion. While the building inspector argued that the home will not qualify as a building in existence of May first nineteen one eighty-one, if reconstructed under the two thousand international residential code, the board agreed with the petition that, A, is undisputed that in a practical sense, the structure on the locus was a building in existence on May first nineteen eighty-one, which we did by granting the appeal, and B, the applicability of the two thousand nine R S C to the reconstruction as new construction thereunder is immaterial to the interpretation of Section three of the zoning bylaw, which I think is essentially what we state. And lastly, under Section six three one three of the zoning bylaw, a permit for less than the required lot area for the existing home be converted to more than one dwelling at all the criteria for sections, uh, six three one three of one through, it's six three one three five have been satisfied. No other permit or approval is required under Section three. Conversion from a one to two families permitted as a break. And I think that's essentially what, that's essentially what we state there.
I have a question.
Yeah? I'm just an author here. He's the attorney.
I have a question as far as, do we stay? Is the building, because we haven't said about any different location of the building, I assume the building is going to be the same frontage distance. Is that true?
It's going to be where it's shown on the plan that we submitted to the board. It'll be in the exact location shown on the plan.
Right.
And the plan showed-
They have the plan.
I have a copy of it here.
Okay.
The plan showed that the existing front setback is twelve point three feet on one end and twelve point nine feet on the other because the, the front line of the building is not exactly parallel to the property line. We're gonna essentially keep that the same, except we're extending it because we're squaring off. When we reconstruct the building, we're squaring off the corner. So we extend the nonconformity by about three feet on each side. But we're not coming any closer to the law line, minimally closer on one end because, again, because it's skewed from the property line, not exactly parallel. We'll be coming a fraction of a foot closer. Um, same thing with respect to the side setbacks. We're not encroaching any more than we currently are. In fact, they currently meet setbacks. And the same with the rear. We're actually bringing, bringing the rear in a bit closer to the, to the front law line, uh, shortening the depth of the home. That's where the new building will be constructed, just as shown on the plan.
Could I have a copy of his email for the records? Because I'm, I'm referring to the minutes.
Oh, yeah, then I thought, can I send, I sent it to-
I have the request of when it was going to be on the, on the time schedule. I just checked, I don't think I have that.
No, 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 but I, I think when, when Adam sent it to me last week, he sent it to me last Wednesday, Thursday. I, I forwarded a copy to you.
Oh, okay.
Because you were asking me to produce it by last Tuesday or Wednesday. I said, no.
Yeah, any minute now, any minute.
And, and when Adam sent me his response, um, I forwarded that to you in saying, he just got it to me.
All right. I probably just kind of ignored it because I didn't need it.
Because you ignored most of it, I did. So there was a lot that went on in this conversation. There was a lot of material covered. The board is very appreciative of your overview of what you gave us because it, it helped us come to the decision. It was, it was a tricky issue. The building inspector spent a lot of time looking at his perspective about how to define a property. But I think all things considered, I mean, every, all of the feedback frankly that I've gotten from everybody, which I think is echoed by you guys, too, is that it's, you know, a very positive move. And I think everyone's excited about it happening, so if this is, are there other corrections? I've made some typos that you found there, but, um, if this is good for you, we're ready to sign off as much. Do you have some other points?
I have a few, and I, I've, I've got a number on this document that I prepared. I'm not gonna even submit it or bother to go through all of them because some of them are sort of immaterial and, and I think that you've, you've addressed them in other areas of the decision. But there are a few that are sort of substantive, and I'd like to have in here if comfortable with the board just because I think it provides some clarity to what occurred. So, um, the first one is on the first page in the very first sentence where you say that, uh, "It's a decision of the Raleigh zoning board of appeals under a protective zoning bylaw upon the petition of George Hazelton as trustee." And then you say, "For a special permit on a property." And my edit just said, "For an administrative appeal, comma, finding, and special permit." Only to make it clear that our application to the board was actually for three different types of relief, not only a special permit under Section six point three point one, but we also sought an administrative appeal, which I think you've made clear as the decision goes on. You've granted that administrative appeal in part anyway. And we've also sought that finding with respect to the modification of the nonconforming structure, which is absolutely essential. If we don't have that finding, we can't make any modification. We can't reconstruct the building. So I'd just like to make that clear, if possible, early on in the decision, that we've sought not simply a special permit under six three one, but we've also sought a finding with respect to the nonconforming structure. And we've also sought an administrative appeal with respect to that definition of a building in existence on, on May first nineteen eighty-one.
And all those boxes were checked off, right?
They were.
If I remember right, yeah.
I, I've got a copy of the application here.
And, and also, you know that when they grant a special permit, when they do, do a finding, but you would like language in there, that it's a finding even though it's a special permit also?
I, I would, because the finding is, I, I understand that every board uses the term, some, some boards use the terms finding and special permit interchangeably. Other boards sort of separate them out. But I, I'm saying it only in the sense that there, aside from the special permit under Section six point three, there needs to be either a second special permit or a second finding that the nonconforming structure is being modified and that the modification is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. That's a separate finding, regardless of what the finding might be under Section six point three point one to convert the structure. We're also modifying a nonconforming structure. And under your nonconforming provisions of your bylaw, which is Section five point four point two, there's a requirement that the, the board make a finding that the change we're making to the structure is not gonna result in a substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
Maybe, could I suggest just saying special permits, um, special permits regarding in the sections?
But, but hold, but hold on. I, the, the find, the first paragraph under findings- But hold, but hold on, the, the find, the first paragraph under findings indicates that it is not a more detrimental nonconforming structure. Is that not clear enough?
No, I think it's clear there. I just wanted to be sure that we were referencing the proper type of relief actually being applied for. You've granted it, but it sounds upfront as if you've granted relief that was never asked for, almost.
Well, we're giving you some extra relief.
You say in special permits according to sections five point four and six point three point three point three.
Adam, that's fine.
I think he had the language.
I know, I don't have a problem. It's what you're asking for. It's just your problem, so maybe.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Oh, okay. You just usually don't use the word finding in the case.
And we can, we can just say for an administrative appeal and special permits, if you prefer to say it that way, and leave the word finding out. I don't care whether finding is included or not, I just want to make it clear that that's what was applied for, special permits and an administrative appeal.
Yeah, that's fine.
So and finding, which is fine?
The other edits I have are, I think it's fine.
No, administrative, yeah.
So administrative appeal, special petition and a finding on property? You want all three, right?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Because I'm going to be running in there and making these, I just want to make sure.
All right, go ahead, Adam.
Administrative appeals in there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
In the second section, preliminary case material, several paragraphs in toward the end, you've got a paragraph that starts after requesting any other hearing testimony, it's on page three of the decision. After requesting any other hearing testimony from other butters or other interested parties, and then it goes on, it says here at the end, "So allow the construction to occur based on support for the project from the community. The town historical district commissioned the board of health and the right of an owner to convert property from a single family to a multiple dwelling unit, given the property's existence prior to nineteen eighty-one." And then you say, "And whose nonconforming use will not be substantially more detrimental." And it's actually where the nonconforming structure will not be substantially more detrimental because there's a distinction between a change in a nonconforming use and a change in a nonconforming structure. Because you've determined that, frankly, because you didn't buy the argument that I made, that this is a continuing nonconforming use and is protected, you've determined it was abandoned, we've essentially deemed this structure a single-family structure because we've lost the use as a two-family. So it's no longer a nonconforming use, it's a conforming use. It's the nonconforming structure that's being changed.
Agreed.
So what I'd like that to say, instead of and whose nonconforming use will not be substantially more detrimental, I'd like it to say and where the nonconforming structure will not be substantially more detrimental.
That's fine. I agree.
Only two other substantive changes under board findings in the first paragraph there. It says, "After concluding a thorough review of the application, with special consideration for its virtually unexpanded nonconformity with respect to side and rear setback laws." It's actually a little, it's not entirely accurate. With respect to the side and rear setback laws, there was no expansion at all. So it should say, and for its unexpanded nonconformity, not virtually unexpanded, it's unexpanded nonconformity with respect to side and rear setback laws. And then it should probably say after that, and its minimally expanded nonconformity with respect to front setback laws, because it's actually the front setback that violates.
Yeah, I couldn't remember where you guys were.
No, it's okay, it's, it's, there's a lot of setbacks involved and there's a lot of nonconformity, so.
So you go for he was?
And then the only other change is in subsection B right below that, you referenced two requirements in section six point three point one. One is the requirement that in the outline district, this does not contain at least sixty thousand square feet of area plus five thousand square feet for the second dwelling unit, comma, as required by six one 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 B and three, I'm sorry, and six three one one one. But then you say, comma, or one hundred and fifty feet of frontage as required by six point three point one point one point one. And I just don't find that frontage requirement anywhere in section six point three. I don't find a frontage requirement anywhere in there that we even needed a waiver or a special permit from. There is a one hundred and fifty foot frontage requirement in the district, I don't doubt that. But I don't think we need relief from it because we're a pre-existing nonconforming structure and we're already protected. And this, this section here, this subsection B seems to be making findings, you're sort of going through what I had outlined in my email to you, the section six point three point one criteria, the five criteria we have to meet, and I just don't see a reference in those criteria to frontage anywhere.
Okay, that is a ref, that does look like a reference to the one hundred and fifty feet across the board.
That was probably me typing at eleven o'clock at night.
I don't know if it's in the bylaws, so I can't check for you.
So you're suggesting we simply remove the original, or one hundred and fifty feet of frontage as required by six one one one?
That's my suggestion, yeah.
I think that's right.
She's crossing it.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Or one hundred and fifty feet of frontage as required by six three one one one.
Yeah.
Okay. And you, and number three was a double one, right? So I cross that one out? You just repeat or something?
No, 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 I read it twice.
He's reading it twice, right.
Number, number two and three.
It's not in there twice, he just read it twice.
Look like they're, they're duplicate, but one reference is a structure and one reference is a use.
Right.
So they're both supposed to be in there.
All right.
And the only other change is one that I think, I think in fact, you probably meant to include because up above where it says board's findings in that final paragraph where you speak to the board's vote, based on the above, the board voted to draft an approval decision with a special permit. You say under sections five point four point two, and I think it should probably say and six point three point one, because there's actually those, both sections you're granting a special permit under. So, apologize for being nitpicky, but.
Where was that at?
It's just above the board's findings.
The paragraph above the board's findings.
Sort of going backwards a bit, just up a couple paragraphs.
Is it six point three point, can we just say six point three?
Six point three point one point three. You actually probably could just say six point three, but.
You could say six point three, it's not a conversion of existing buildings.
All right, okay. I have, I have a couple. Oh, first of all, I, I don't send notices to the town clerk, it's already filed with the town clerk. You can just, you don't have to include that. I think you may have been including it in all the decisions, but I send it to the planning board and the board of selectmen, building inspector, and actually CONCON and board of health too, but not town clerk. Just a spelling error. Certified butters list was reviewed and accepted in existing. Two paragraphs below that, I don't understand what you're trying to say here. When you say, or use the circumstances, da, 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 despite evidence suggesting that the bylaw issue is clearly one of use or not, not intent as per by Attorney Costa.
That whole debate revolved around whether the absence of anyone living there occurred by intent and Attorney Costa's argument was, you know, there was clearly no intent to leave the property. And what I'm seeing here, perhaps not as well as, and this is what you're responding to, is I think the board felt that it has to do with the fact that it's being used or it's not, and the property wasn't being used. I don't care whether they didn't pay the rent, I don't care whether the town asked them to go, I don't care what the issue was, that it was never used, they never tried to get it used.
Literally one on, on.
That confused me too when I first read it. I actually rewrote it in my version to say what I think, what I think reads a little more clearly, I just said that the bylaw issue is clearly one of use, comma, not as suggested by Attorney Costa, intent.
That's fine.
Which I think is what you were trying to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I just couldn't even understand, that's why I, I wouldn't have picked on it.
I wanted to make sure you paid attention.
Yeah. Well, you've read it so nicely.
It's a confuse.
One of use, not as a testament, okay. Structure six point three, da, 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 da. And just the twenty first day of June? Those were the only ones I.
The first page, there was just a, in the paragraph one, two, three, four, five, that's the applicant is requesting, the second quote isn't, and it doesn't end.
And that the board made issue a special permit.
There's just no, there's no end quote. I think it's meant to be after structure.
Yes.
Is that it?
That's it.
Anyone else?
No, thank you, Ruth.
You're good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, we'll get a.
Do you want me to make the changes right now?
Yep. Oh, did you need a correction, page two, next last paragraph in the, of course, in the sentence, it reads currently, in which is it located? Should it be, it is located?
Oh, yeah.
It is. This'll be available, she'll record it.
Well.
Monday.
Okay. Great.
You know, as a litigator, I'm very jealous of your ability to sit here and correct the opinion. I don't get that over to myself. Very difficult.
You can't exactly do this with a judge. What do you practice? Are you just a general litigator?
Ah, civil, yeah, civil litigator.
But I think we ought to change this.
Which courts usually?
Federal, if I have to. State if I have to. Right? I think, okay. If I have to go to district court, it's been a bad day.
Yes, for all of us.
How soon does George anticipate? You know, try, he sounded like he wanted to try to do a day, he said, I guess he's got to close the day, or you've got to close, and that's.
I don't even recall, in short, I've got it in here, when the closing day is, I know it's tied to the approval, so.
Yeah, we extended it.
Yeah, I know it's been extended. Yeah, he's anxious to move forward as soon as he closes, essentially, he's got all the other permits and approvals he needs.
Is he going to try to get a foundation in and a wall? Is it?
Yeah.
I'm good.
He wanted to be here tonight, but he's got to agree with the new report historical clearance.
No, there was no, you know, with your presence certainly, that was unnecessary.
Not before.
We seldom see applicants so present, you know, assigning a decision, they just want to know what is available.
And I had even told George that I didn't necessarily have to be here, my, my, my nativey edits were sort of just to fly up some loose ends and, you know, we've got to go back to, to Canada and get a building permit, I just want to be sure that he understands, you know, that we're in compliance, we're not in compliance.
No, it's valid, I have no problem with it.
Well, I appreciate you paying your communication, sending it down.
Yeah, no, it's, you know, it's always useful, eventually the board to access expertise when it's there and, you know, someone like yourself who's got experience knows, just from your presentation, you know, the whole, the whole theory behind what's happening in any way, we have to remember when we looked at this, like, this issue last.
Right. This isn't especially a complex one, so.
Yeah, there were a couple, there was, there were a couple of cases tonight that weren't finishing up like this, that had some intricacies associated with it, that were anomalies in the law, that, you know, we've got grandpa that we can't grandpa, the next case we've got to do is, we've got an annual apartment that was granted, we granted, it's a beautiful building. Ownership changes, you have to apply for, just reapply for it.
That's, that's what we're going to do next.
Right, that's why, and in the interim between when we granted that permit and approved that, the bylaw, we changed the bylaw, so now that's compliancy. So we have to give him a variance, just to, you know, he has to come to us and, you know, to conform, he'd have to cut five hundred square feet off his, the ticket. So we do have a, we do also, Don and I also sit on a zoning review committee, which is working, going through all the zone bylaws to go to, but we can only go to town meeting at best twice a year.
I have one more question on it. The bottom of, my printout on the second page, the last paragraph on the bottom of the second page, says to draft a decision for the board's vote at their June twenty first meeting, and I'm not sure you, what, did you mean their July nineteenth meeting or?
Yeah.
Because you voted on June twenty first.
In July.
So it definitely is on?
Yeah. And that's, that's just a case that, you know, it'll be fixed in the future, but it's a problem now, you know, and, you know, here you have a perfect legitimate need, a valid use, you know, you've got a new owner who's having his folks going to come live in the property, we have some, you know, we've got a bylaw that would prevent him from having that occur.
Right.
It's not the intent that would come. So there are some elements of that there that need some extra attention that would not normally come, you know? I mean, most of the time it's, you're within five feet of the setback, okay? You're not screwing up the neighborhood, fine.
Was the, was the prior proceeding a forty B that you've got?
Yeah, we've had that for almost two years.
Have you had many?
No, one, two or three in the last, how many, how many forty Bs have you had?
Two. This will be, we've granted, granted two.
One, the first, we then went down on Depot Way.
Right. So we've got three.
Two, one, one lost.
We've granted three. And we had one that withdrew or died. We had two that actually died. Huntsley Hill, we denied that one differently.
Yeah, right.
We denied Huntsley Hill. And then we had the one out there on Weathersfield Street by Hillside Avenue, where it's all those single-family houses now, down along on Weathersfield Street. You cross over the road.
Yeah, okay.
On the left-hand side.
Yeah.
Coming up to Hillside.
Yeah.
Okay. That, that died.
Yeah, on the other side, yes.
Never went, never went through with it.
Yeah.
You missed the current applicant, he, he stated again tonight, as we've sensed, he's a rather hesitant applicant at this point, he's, you know, it's taken forever to get here. It's not a big, it's not a big project, I mean, it's ten units to ten deli, you know? We tried to figure out what can we do, what can we find him, can we get him to do something? Doesn't seem to be in a hurry, and I'm sure it's, you know, total economics, you know, because, you know, when he said, oh, if you cut us down one unit, how could I make work in action? My reaction is, what makes you think you're going to sell them all? You build them and you don't sell one, you're not getting that revenue. So whether I take the unit away from you or you don't sell just one, and who's selling out units these days? Even affordable units? They can't get people to, they can't get affordable.
Can't fill them.
Candidates to, to buy the units. Because they can't get, they can't get the financing.
Rentals are fine, but ownership, ownership's a candidate, can't even find eligible.
Yeah.
Oh, was that open a year and a half?
Is it okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Decision of the Raleigh zoning board of appeals under protective zoning bylaw, apartment petition, so George has Hazelton, trustee of the Pleasant Street Realty Trust dated five eleven two thousand twelve, for an administrative appeal, special permit, and or a finding on a property located at thirty fourth, thirty sixth Pleasant Street, as a party agreed by the action of building inspector on four eighteen two thousand twelve, in order to construct a two-family dwelling at said location.
That's great.
Sound good?
Does that accept all?
It is.
Okay, fine.
Okay. And where was the other one?
Oh, well, there's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them.
Want me to go through it?
No, I trust you.
I trust.
Right.
Do you want me, do you want me to just tell you real quick?
Yeah, do it.
I'll point them out because I can't explain where they are. If you put that down, I'll show you. If you put that down, I'll show you. I got rid of town clerk right there, so you're not going to be able to see it. I got rid of a quote right there. Second page? I don't think anyone suggested this, but existing was missing an S.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Down here, I put in, that's one of the important, or the confusing one, one of use, not one of intent as attested to by attorney Costa. And then down at the bottom, structure, not use. Substantial or anything else?
Structure will not be.
Yeah, it's a, it's a structure, not a use. And then it is.
Not the form of structure.
It is, not is it.
Will not be substantial, right.
And then I added six point three right there.
Yep.
And then this page, I added right around here, in minimally unexpanded nonconformity with respect to front setback laws. And I took out the word virtually. And then I got rid on B of the or one hundred and fifty feet of frontage as required by six point three point one one one, so you can't see that. And the date, there's a date on that last page too. Yeah, the June twenty first meeting, I changed that to July. And then the file date is not the nineteen day, June is the twenty first day of June, correct? Do you, are you voting today or are you voting like?
We. Yeah, we voted.
Voted on the twenty first of June.
We voted, okay, now we're going to sign it.
Under, so this paragraph says then voted, they, basically about the board voted to draft an approval for the board's vote at or before, and I changed it to the July nineteenth meeting. So does that mean they voted on June twenty first and they're signing it in July? Or are you voting tonight?
I would, we've got to.
It should be board's expectation.
Well, let's vote it now and let's kind of vote it now and.
We are, because we made all these changes.
Answer all the questions.
Do you know what I mean? Is it, is it real clear?
No, it's, it's.
I thought we voted before, right, to draft.
We already, it was a draft.
We, we voted on it. That we approved it. We voted, we voted.
You should actually be just directing him to draft it because you should get it done within fourteen days and over the town clerk. I mean, they're not strict on it, but I think that's the way we wanted to do it, is to direct him to draft, and then you're really voting tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
Let me, let me change those dates.
We just can vote to approve the edited and corrected decision. What's the problem with that?
Yeah.
Okay, you want the official date to be the twenty first day of June, then? Okay. It doesn't jive with the other language, but I think it's clear.
It's a valid decision.
It just votes used in two different ways, is all it is. We voted on the decision, we voted on the substance before, now we're.
We voted on drafting at this date.
Well, yeah, because Katrina's right though, because if, if we vote the decision, we're supposed to produce it.
Yeah, yeah.
If we just vote to draft an approval, then I've got thirty days or longer to draft. And then once we, once we have the signed draft.
I think that's the way the board wanted to always do it.
So we should, we, yeah, I think in the future, we should make sure that's.
Yeah.
That's what we have.
The way we have most of our, how we plan, which is we vote to draft.
Do you feel comfortable?
As, as long as the vote hasn't changed tonight, I'm comfortable.
Oh, no, that's the change.
Well, I know.
No, but for all these changes we've made now.
And are you signing it?
We should be voting again to approve.
As, as written.
That's the way I think it should be done.
Yeah.
Is, this is the official decision making.
Right.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we vote for the final drafted version with edits and corrections as, as written.
I'll second that. Any discussion? You're done? All those are favors? Say if I'm saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Everyone's voting on that?
So then this date here is going to be.
Right, so you need to change, change this vote to the twenty first day.
Okay, you know what, you start signing, I'm just going to change that page then, okay?
You can't sign it because that's what the date is.
Oh, that's the one.
Change it to today's date.
Lost when she's caught.
You're going to have to find someone.
Perhaps.
All right. Katrina has taken the position of town planer.
Where?
Town planer.
Oh.
So she's no longer an assistant to us or can.
Oh, okay. Well, it's not just still in the building.
No, she's still here. She thinks she's not going to be here, but we're going to vote at her.
Probably put a application in.
They should do is, we need one for the.
We can just do motions, right?
So we can get one for Joel and Paul to do the same thing that she did, have them come by.
You're going to have to, he and Ken are going to have the control, convince Debbie.
I convinced her.
It's obvious, I agree completely. I agree completely.
Vote the nineteenth day of July.
Only one? This is the day?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth day of July. That's today's date.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
I don't know, I think we should have a discussion.
Twenty ninth, the twenty first, all of that stuff.
I'm going to miss this board.
I know.
You can come visit anytime.
I told her I'll join it.
You can do that too?
You could come visit.
You can do that too.
Plan board doesn't meet on the same night we did, you could come in.
We're going to take motions every meeting, so have you do all the same work. I don't think you haven't.
Haven't escaped.
We point our clerk.
Exactly.
No, you're the clerk.
No, no, that's why, that's why I'm scared when she's leaving.
Recruiting secretary.
The thing is, we don't want to go backwards, and it's quite a shoe to fit here.
No, that's true, that's true. But, but, you know, the ignition is there, the engine's in place, but we have to find someone to teach to drive it, but there's something there to work. There was never anything there before. She, we can probably scan and, and send you a signed copy, is that helpful?
That, that's great, you can do that.
Are you in a rush?
I'm not in a rush, so, I mean, I obviously would like it recorded as soon as possible so the clock starts to tick on our field period. But, you know, it doesn't need to be tomorrow or Monday.
You know, actually, I am working tomorrow. I am supposed to be wearing my planner hat.
But can she, is, is.
Susan, Susan, Susan.
On Fridays?
I don't know.
Oh, she has summer hours.
Yeah.
Okay.
Monday.
Monday.
That's fine.
Is that right?
That's great.
But, I mean, if you wanted to, if you wanted a, a scanned copy.
I'd appreciate that, and you can scan it.
We can email it to you.
That's fine, and you can do it on Monday if you want, when you record, if you want to release it before that.
I can do it right now.
Before that.
Yeah, that's fine, she'll take care of it.
Just if you could leave your card with your.
I will.
I think I have it in my.
I can leave it, it's fine.
Yeah, or Katrina, check that email of mine from the last Wednesday or Thursday. Because I just forwarded, it would have Adam's seat.
Yeah, I, I know I have it on that, and, and you also forwarded an email just yesterday too that he. Thanks.
Well, George, we expect a tour.
Yes, I will, and again, thank you for, for your courtesy last meeting, and between the last and this.
Thanks for you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all, good to meet you all.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
No, I, I made an email.
Take this if you need.
It's just sent to my email. It, it doesn't make a copy. I just panicked, though, I opened the wall and said it's the one with the cutoff. And I said, did I just, did you guys just sign the one with the cutoff? This is the third decision?
This is, this should be the sister's.
Now, I wasn't, I wasn't responsible for that, that town seal being cut off. I don't know what Tom was thinking in this one.
What, what, what are you doing?
What are you doing?
What?
I figured this is a draft, so when I print out the corrected copy, I'll fix that. It's actually already fixed.
He's already voted the nineteenth day of July.
Who's going to read this one?
I'll read it, I'll read it. Okay, decision of the Raleigh zoning Board of Appeals under the protective zoning by law petition of Andrew and Nerissa Walland dated five twenty three two thousand twelve for a special permit on a property located at thirty sixth Warehouse Lane to reestablish under new ownership an accessory in-law apartment as previously permitted, as a previously permitted use at said address. I have appointment there, I think they want apartment. A public hearing was held at the Raleigh Town Hall Annex Center School on May twenty first two thousand twelve. Members acting on this case are Don W. Thurston, Chairman Mike Doherty, member David LeBeck, member Nathaniel Dunbar, member, and Tom Savihar, clerk pursuant to a public notice originally in the Town Comment, a newspaper in general circulation, and Town Rally, published on the fifth of June two thousand twelve and the twelfth of June two thousand twelve, and by mail sent postage prepaid to all parties in interest as defined by Mass General Law's chapter forty eight, section eleven. And such list of parties was cert, as, was certified by the town assessors in accordance therewith, and to the town clerk, the planning board, the board of selectmen, and the building inspector, and by being posted in a conspicuous place in the Raleigh Town Hall for not less than fourteen days. The land is located in the outlying district and is shown on assessor's map lot twenty seven, lot thirty six. These recorded in the Essex Registry of Deeds, book two nine five, page three four two nine. The applicant is requesting a special permit and/or other, any other necessary variances under section six point six of the Raleigh zoning bylaws, which states with regard to accessory in-law apartments, the board may issue a special permit, quote, within an existing single family dwelling where lots meet the requirements for the minimum area in the district. The special permit shall be issued to the original owner of the property. Should there be a change in ownership, the special permit will cease to exist and the property will revert to its original single family status. The chairman opened the public hearing in due form and determined there's no conflict of interest by him or any other member. Public hearing, primary case material, public hearing on the twenty first of June two thousand twelve at approximately eight thirty P M. The applicant Andrew Wallen was presented the hearing. The certified abutters list was reviewed and accepted, and the presence of signed and certified permit license clearance form from the town of Raleigh was also submitted and accepted. The applicant discussed the need for this hearing, stating that he and his spouse were planning to purchase the property at thirty sixth Warehouse Lane and sought the special permit for an accessory in-law apartment to provide, that should be housing, for his parents who were moving to the location. He simply wished to obtain a new permit in his name in order to comply with the Raleigh zoning bylaw requiring new owners to obtain said permit. Current owners John and Nancy Fischera hold a special permit for an accessory apartment at this address. Chairman then read into the record letters from the board of health and the building inspector. The board of health had no issues with the application. The building inspector noted that due to changes in the Raleigh accessory in-law bylaw, and until changes are made which address existing permitted in-law units, that the board grant necessary variances to enable new owners such as the Wallens to secure the necessary special permit so that they may comply with the standing bylaws subject to board approval. Mister Wallen provided a plot plan attached and described the property, and described the property, should be a period. He also provided a signed document from the Fischers indicating that there had been no other changes to the property since the date the original plan was approved. He also supplied the board with a declaration of covenants which will be recorded with the decision in the registry of deeds. Decision board doesn't need to be counted on. After requesting any other hearing testimony from either abutters or other interested parties, of which there were none, and review all the pertinent data was completed, the board determined that there were sufficient grounds to grant the special permit as requested. Based on the above, the board voted to draft an approval decision granting both variants to size limitations previously proved, that should be a D, and the special permit as requested to establish the accessory in-law apartment as it currently exists within the structure of thirty sixth Warehouse Lane, should be at, 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 right. Board findings, the board, after concluding a thorough review of the application, proposed request for the continuation of an accessory in-law apartment considering the applicant's desire to maintain the character of the site and paying the integrity of the structure now existing on the site, agreed to issue a new special permit to establish the said in-law unit at the site as requested on site plans provided as part of the original application and shown in the accompanying plot plan dated three seven oh seven, spec number oh seven dash five eight Kaiser Industries, Inc. Therefore, the board voted to approve by a vote of four to one a variance from the size requirements under section six point six point two point two on the basis of it being a physical hardship to make any changes to the site or structure to comply with current bylaws, and also issue a special permit for the presence of the in-law apartment and six point six to be granted subject to the following conditions. One, any changes to the plan supply with the application resulting from any actions included herein must be brought before the zoning board of appeals for a few unapproval prior to the filing of the plan at the registry of deeds. Two, final approved copy of the plans must be submitted to the fire department to determine if all, or any additional proposed alarms are to code, any subsequent change to the plan must be submitted to the zoning board of appeals for approval. Three, failure to comply with the provisions of the decision at any time shall be reasonable ground for the building inspector to order operation of all construction at this location to cease. Voted this nineteenth day of July.
It's the right date? Did you want to say instead of therefore the board voted to approve by vote of four to one, therefore the board voted to, to direct the clerk to draft a decision for approval?
Uh, yeah, no.
Do you want to stick with that method, or do you want to just keep it as is?
Well, you know, I.
Because you say voted this nineteenth day of July, and it, but it just says you voted on June twenty first over here.
Yes, I know.
Basically, what we're doing here is just continuing this in-law apartment, correct?
Yeah.
Almost come up with some kind of form instead of all this.
Well, it has to come back before here.
You know, we got to do, we got to do something because any in-law apartment in existence now is probably bigger.
Than the new bylaw.
Than the new bylaw.
Right.
And they're all grandfathered.
How did you want to word that? Because while you guys could be talking, I could be changing these. Therefore, the board voted to direct the clerk, or how did you word the last one?
Yeah, no, I think you're right. The, the board voted to direct the clerk to draft an approval. By four to one. I, I, I wanted, the reason I wanted to include the one, the vote, is because we had a dissenting vote, and it's, I think it's important to make sure that the dissenting vote is reported.
Oh. And where do, where does it even say that there was a dissenting vote?
It's four to one.
Four to one.
Yeah, four, four, two, two.
Oh, but you're, I guess you're going to take a vote now, and you can do the same thing?
Well, if the vote stays the same, I mean.
It's kind of messy.
I, you know. I mean.
Or you could just switch this to voted this twenty first day of June. Do you want to do that? And it was, this decision was just signed later, but, I mean, it was voted on in June.
Yeah, you know, you know.
The clerk's within fourteen days.
No, but that isn't, it isn't, it is a rule.
It's fourteen days from the day you record it.
But if someone appealed on that basis, they just say, oh, it's, they ignore it.
What, what happens if?
Frankly, what we should probably do is just, I mean, we'll, we'll figure out something to do tonight, but we should probably get Judy's opinion on this and just have a explicit method going forward.
I think we know the right way to do it. It's not to vote on that night, because if we're going to take a whole month.
Right.
To write the decision. Then it's not right. We should be voting then on the, on the draft decision that's corrected.
That, right. I mean, we, we've always, we've always voted to have a draft decision.
What we're voting to do is to do a draft decision.
Right.
That's what we voted.
A draft approval.
Now, tonight, we vote on the approval.
Okay, so, so we, there could have been one dissenting vote to draft the decision for approval, because he still didn't want an approval. And now you're just going to take another vote?
Right.
Now, I don't, I, you know, we, yeah, well, we can do that.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think that dissenting vote was against. I don't think, I don't think that dissenting vote was against the approval of...
No, of course not.
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, why?
It was the variance.
It was...
And, and this is all in one, kinda like, there was two separate votes.
It was actually, you were voting against the variance, right?
Yeah.
Because a hardship would have been to change it.
Right. But I don't, I don't think we did two votes on it. I think we just voted and, and we voted four to one.
No, I think we have the variance right here. I think you did, didn't you?
I don't think so.
Well, Nat would have voted against both of them because you can't get to two without getting past one, right?
Logically, you're right.
I just don't remember.
I think we only get one vote.
Those two separate votes. It was the variance first. Doherty motions to grant a variance, and then Doherty motions to grant a special permit under Section six six. Do you want me to just go in there and put these?
Were they both four to one?
Nope, the first one was unanimous and the second one was four to one.
The variance was four, was five zero?
Four to one was on the variance.
Yep.
Okay, so...
That's all.
So then, just, just right before, words of, and also, in that sentence, just write by a vote of five to zero, issue a special permit.
Yeah, that's fine. That's good. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't pass it. We had two votes.
So the vote took place then, you know, the vote to draft it. Are you also going to vote tonight?
I think we should, yeah.
Yeah, maybe that's right.
So we've been discussing.
Okay, can, can you just do that before I leave so I can get it down?
Yeah.
Who made the original motion?
I did.
All right, shall we wanna make it again?
I'll make a motion, uh, opposed to accept the, uh, accept the decision as drafted and edited.
Is that what the vote's gonna be?
Yeah, I think so.
It's gonna be as it was drafted.
Oh, okay.
With corrections.
With corrections.
All right, well, that's simpler. That's a simpler vote.
Yeah.
We'll second that last thing.
We're sustaining. What we're doing is we're sustaining the corrections. We're not revoting technically.
That way I can find out.
No, this isn't, this isn't right.
It's not. So if you wanna, if you wanna continue the substance so that you don't screw up the fourteen days, you have to actually vote on the substance today.
Right, yeah. Hey, here, you can read it. It's at the very top. That was, those were the motions.
Okay, so, so, yeah, so, um... Yeah, I'll move to...
Yeah, where can't you move?
To, to, to grant variance under Section six point six point two point two of the bylaw, due to the fact that the town had previously permitted the structure, and changing that would be a hardship on the new owners, as reflected in the decision that was drafted and edited.
Okay.
Give me a second.
All right, a second.
See, I don't think that's right either.
No, it isn't.
Because you have to do that at a public hearing.
That's right.
Did we close this?
All we're, all we're doing is voting on whether the draft decision is that... We, we had a draft decision and now we made...
Now we're approving that decision.
Now, now we've made changes to the draft.
I don't, I don't disagree with that. I just think that you're, you're...
But it doesn't mean that you've signed the decision, does it?
You're not through the fourteen days. You're not complying with the fourteen days. I mean, that's, so...
I don't think we're gonna have a problem anyway.
Right.
Just get it over with.
All right, so I'll...
Build a bridge and get over this one.
Move to, uh, accept the decision as, as drafted and edited.
You're gonna second that, Tom? Good.
Vote made to accept the draft decision as correction.
Now, who makes changes?
End seconded.
You don't know how we voted.
That'll be our next question. I should move back.
Where was I?
For the votes, though.
Okay, who was made to second it? All those with favors, say, if I'm saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
I'm voting on the drafting.
Right.
I don't, I don't know how you get around that unless you wanna do it within fourteen days and circulate it by email and then... Get it, so, I just don't...
We always, because you're right. Dave's right. I mean, we always, we always drafted to approve.
Yes.
We authorized the clerk to draft an approved decision, which was then for signature at the next one. So all we were doing was saying draft an approval.
But are you continuing the...
We used to say draft.
We would usually leave the public hearing open even.
Yeah, we leave the public hearing.
Doesn't give us...
You leave the public hearing open. You draft, you motion to draft.
Drafted an affirmative decision.
Then you reopen the public, or you, you open the continued public hearing at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, but nobody speaks.
You vote on, you vote to...
No discussion.
Discussion is...
No one's here.
We don't vote to...
Plus the discussion is over.
So you vote to, you vote on the substance at that point.
We didn't vote, we shouldn't vote to draft and a... What we are, what we are doing is drafting a approval decision, or rather...
Right, it was just a draft. We, we didn't, we didn't even actually, as I recall, and I think our, I think we looked at our copies of our decisions, at least the ones that I've been writing. Yeah, me and I. That our, our, all we did is say, we approve, okay? You all approve, we all approve, okay? And we would draft an approval, and then at that one, we would make all our edits. And then we would say, you all approve, we would vote then, sign and vote, right then?
Right, that's, that's what we've done so that...
Because we weren't committed to a vote. Yeah, we were stuck with fourteen days. Then, then we had time for the next hearing to, for the next meeting to have the decision. And at that point, we could still do whatever we wanted to do. I mean, we could even change the decision if we wanted. We could have at that point, right?
Right, because we're still open in a public...
We're still open.
We're still open.
Right. All you were doing was authorizing the clerk to draft a denial or approval.
There was no penalty in the law for missing the fourteen days.
Yeah, and I don't think...
You read it, you read it. You can't, it says that you should do it within fourteen days, but it says it's no penalty if you don't.
Typical. No, that's what, that's what I recall.
Yes, good.
Yeah, I was reading the middle of the minutes, the minutes we had the last one. We're out here eleven.
Yeah.
Oh, there's too much.
In, in the vote too, I did add an ounce name. I figured you would want that by a vote of four to one so they know who's voting against. Nathaniel Dunbar voting against.
I think that's right. I think we have to do that.
If that's what could have just started.
Therefore, the board voted through a vote by vote of four to one. Karma Nathaniel Dunbar voting against a variance in the size and the plan is under Section six point six point two point two on the basis of the things, the physical hardship to make any changes to the site or structure to comply with current bylaws.
That's fine. That's good.
All right, we'll sign this and...
Okay. And we'll talk about Katrina.
Talk about it tomorrow.
On your own, it's fine.
While we, while we voted it.
Pardon?
While we, while we voted.
I bet it was unanimous.
Good guess. How do you know that? My God.
Because last meeting was the first time I've ever seen you guys disagree before.
Well, we always tried to agree, come up with a unanimous.
Yeah, that's why I don't get along with you guys.
Well, that's the reason. It always used, originally, it was a three-man board that had to be unanimous.
Wow.
And so you, and it, and finally, the law opened up so you can have a five-man board, but the vote had to be, had to be four.
Right.
Yes, which gave an individual a chance to express themselves how they may have disagreed with something, but if on a three-man board, you may have disagreed in the way it was being done.
But you can't, you can't issue a dissent after that or anything.
No, but the thing is, with a three-man board, you have to...
I don't think it's gonna be an issue. I just see, it seems like there's gotta be a fine way to do it.
Forget about the fact that you don't agree with everybody else on something.
Yeah, that's tough.
But now, I can disagree because I don't lose a variance.
Well, I was still...
But you knew it passed at the same time.
Oh, yeah.
Don't you, don't you think it would be a...
Or vote to draft a decision or flex.
Right, and approval.
A B and C.
Right. That's, that's why we never had to even, we never really got beyond...
Do I hear a vote? Shall we close this hearing?
All right, so move.
Seconded.
Did we just adjourn?
Uh, well, we're not yet.
No, just close the hearing.
Excellent. Why don't you, why don't you keep calling to close the hearing?
The hearing was, there was no hearing.
What hearing?
This one.
You close that. You have to close it to vote on it. You're supposed to close the hearing and then discuss it and vote on it.
No, when did, we shouldn't have closed it last time.
Yeah, they should always be closed before you vote.
No, it shouldn't.
No, we, we, we...
All right.
No, please vote.
Yeah. Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Aye.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I knew I was gonna get you on that one.